Will the clerk please call the roll?
Shields.
Here.
Simpson. Coin.
Here.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colasar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the May 14, 2012 regular meeting as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
The reports of standing committees for the Finance Committee, we met this evening at 5:30. Several items were discussed and will be on next council's agenda. Health, Safety and Sanitation, Mr. Rose is not here. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report and no meetings scheduled.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidebox Committee, Mr. Simpson is not here. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colasar.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Thank you. Next item is a request for council action. We have several items for the Finance Committee. We have 12-100 Budget Amendments, 12-101 Advance Request for the CDBG 2012, 12-102 Expenditure Over $15,000 For Truck and Water, For The Water Department, 12-103 Memorandum Of Understanding Ray &amp; Associates, 12-104 Expenditure Over $15,000 To Increase The PO For The Police Department Vehicle Maintenance, 12-105 Revocable Use Permit For The Medina CDC, 12-106 Agreement With CT Consultants, The CHIP Grant, 12-107 Agreement With Arcadis Brownfield Grant, 12-108 Forecloser Registration Program, Section 1380 Of The Zoning Code Edition, 12-109 Funding For Town Hall And Engine House Museum, 12-110 Champion Creek Multipurpose Path Trail Easement, 12-111 Essements Or Estimates For Proposed Facilities At Spring Grove Cemetery, 12-112 Agreement With Priority Dispatch Software And Training, And 12-113 Bank Contract For 7/15/12 To 7/14/17. Reports From Municipal Officers, Mayor Hanwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, the Memorial Day Parade and ceremony went very well. The weather is very cooperative. We had a large crowd both at the square, the parade route, and at the cemetery for the service at the end. On Monday, May 7th, Medina County Treasurer John Burke launched the 11th year for the Fix-It Fund Home Improvement Loan Program. The interest rates are 3% below normal. Bank rates for repairs or home improvements. There are a few restrictions. One is the home value must be less than $200,000. That's just the home, not the land. No pools, hot tubs, unattached garages or sheds are permitted. It's a five-year loan from $1,500 to $50,000. There are no income restrictions. Must be current on real estate taxes. The funds are first come, first served. And applications are available at the following banks: Huntington Bank, Key Bank, and U.S. Bank. And if there's any questions, residents are welcome to contact Treasurer John Burke's office at 330-725-9746. This Friday, June 1st, the Medina Community Band Concerts start. They're held each Friday night in June and July at 8:30 PM. And on Wednesday, July 4th, at 8:30 PM. This is a great community event for families. They're free. And people are welcome to bring their own chairs, sit on the benches at the square, or blankets. And then, lastly, Jazz Under The Stars is offering free concerts on the square. This is put on by Ormaco, merchants and businesses in Medina. There's one each month, Saturday, June 9th, Saturday, July 7th, Saturday, August 12th, and Saturday, September 1st. All Saturday concerts are from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Information's available at www.Ormaco.org. Ormaco, these are free concerts as well. Ormaco takes a portion of the money donated to them and also uses it for arts and music program for youth. And this summer, they're hosting Summer Art Program for Youth at the Union Square Community Room on June 9th, 16th, and 23rd. They're in the morning from 9:00 to 10:30 AM each Saturday. And then they're having a graduation on June 30th. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to report, several weeks ago, council approved RFQs for, to request RFQs from Bond Counsel and Bond Underwriter Services. We're going to look into refinancing some outstanding debt that's callable this fall. Interest rates are better now than when we did the issuance in 2002, and also our credit rating has improved since then. So we're going to look into that. We received those on Friday, opened them today. We had four underwriters and three law firms submit, and so we will have a recommendation to council to move forward on that project and look to save some money on our financing costs with that this fall. The other thing is, there's an appointment to the Income Tax Review Board on the agenda. That will, the two gentlemen then, that have been appointed, that will have been appointed after tonight, have found a third volunteer. And we will be sending notices this week and holding a meeting soon with the Income Tax Board of Review, so some people that have been waiting for a little while can get their Income Tax Review Board questions heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning and Community Development Director, Mr. Hannan.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report at this time.
Thank you. Fire Chief, Chief Painter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I may have a couple incidents since our last meeting that I'd like to update you on. On May 11th, approximately 11:55, our department responded to 221 South Jefferson Street, which was Dominick's Restaurant. Upon arrival, we found flames venting through the roof. The fire was contained at the kitchen area and the overhead ductwork. Dominick's has decided to move up a scheduled remodeling plan for the dining room area in conjunction with the fire repairs, and hopefully be back in business here in a couple of weeks. Immediately after that, approximately eight hours after we cleared that scene, we had another fire at 40 Medina Street. This is the warehouse building directly behind the Medina Steakhouse. Our units were on the road actually doing other inspections, so we were on scene in less than three minutes. But upon arrival, the whole second floor was fully involved at that point, and we had seven other townships come in to help us on that. The building was a total loss, but the two exposed structures were protected. And lastly, last night, members of our department in conjunction with the Medina County Technical Rescue Team responded to Hinckley Township to assist a citizen that was stuck up on the ledges by Hinckley Lake there. The rescue lasted approximately two hours and was completed without incident. Thank you.
Thank you. Recreation Center Director, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. President. In an effort to help ensure the safety and security of the patrons of the MCRC, I would like to remind all non-members of the REC Center that our new ID policy is in effect. This policy requires that all patrons using the facility, that our non-members will need to show an ID in order to enter the facility. Preferred IDs are driver's license, state IDs, student IDs for guests that are under 16 years to 13 years of age, passports, and military IDs. Day passes will not be sold to persons who fail to present a photo ID. And all guests 12 years and younger must be accompanied by an adult providing proper photo identification. We do now offer what we call a non-member REC ID for $2. This can be purchased at the front desk after you show your proper identification and will suffice as your ID for access from that point on. This new policy allows us to check all patrons 18 and over to a National Sexual Offender Registry for security purposes. And for security purposes, it gives us a log of all patrons entering the building. Just a reminder, too, the REC Center is back to our summer hour schedule starting today through Labor Day. Please visit our website at www.mudinarec.org for those changes and to download our new spring summer brochure. Lastly, our next scheduled Advisory Board meeting is Thursday, June 21st at 7:30 at the REC Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Building Official, Mr. Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pool season is here again, and so I'd like to remind our citizens who plan to install one that a building permit is required. If there's a pool associated electrical equipment such as a pump being installed, an electrical permit is also required. Some homeowners are deciding to install the electrical circuits to the pool without the assistance of an electrician. While this is permitted for single-family homeowners, the Electrical Code requirements are many and sometimes confusing for those not familiar with them. The Electrical Code has changed much during the last 10 years regarding pool installations. More regulations have been added every code cycle as new information is gathered regarding electrical hazards around pools. Bonding and grounding of the pool area has become extensive and is the main source of confusion for most homeowners. With the use of electricity increasing and more electrical lines being installed underground, proper grounding and bonding of the pool area has become more important than ever. For homeowners who want to install their own electrical circuits for the pool, know that the Medina City Building Department will assist you with the requirements for a safe installation. Please contact us for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Swanson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking of pools, I have some ways to cool off here. The City Pool will be opening on Friday, June 8th this year. It'll open, the hours of the City Pool are from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, weather permitting, and the concession stand will open at 12:00 noon. Daily passes are $3 per person and can be only purchased at the pool. Children under the age of five and seniors 60 and older are free. You can buy seasonal passes available at the REC Center. And then, also, the splash pad. The splash pad opened up this past weekend. The hours of operation are 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. For information on reserving the pavilion at Fred Greenwood or any other city park, please call 721-6950, and you can book your reservations there. Thank you.
Thank you. City Engineer, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our 2012 Concrete Street Repair Program began today, beginning this week. This project will take about eight weeks to complete. We started in the northeast quadrant of the city and we're working our way counterclockwise over until early August. Also, our Beechwood Street Reconstruction Phase 1 Project is out to bid. Bids are due at the end of next week. That project will get started here, I'm sure, in the next couple of weeks as well. Lastly, in the month of May, we unfortunately had two flooding events, Monday, May 7th, and Friday, May 25th. We had several people in the city throughout the different parts of the city report basement flooding. I'd like to encourage anyone that did to please report it. It really helps us as we analyze these situations and try to find the reasons why and look for resolutions to program to get as much information as we can. So I'd encourage anyone that had some flooding and hasn't contacted us yet, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Service Director, Ms. Conwell, I mean Acting Service Director, Ms. Conwell.
Wow. Thank you, Mr. President. As a reminder, rubbish collection will be delayed one day this week as a result of the Memorial Day holiday. So trash pickup will be Tuesday, May 29th through Saturday, June 2nd. If you have any questions, you can call our sanitation office at 722-9026. For those who are interested, the annual Drinking Water Consumer Confidence Report is available on our city's website as well as in our Water Service Office here at Medina City Hall. This report is designed to provide information about water quality test results, how to participate in decisions concerning your drinking water, and any water system context. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of Mayor's Appointment, we have Gary Hetrick for the Income Tax Review Board for a term expiring 12/31/12.
Move to approve the Mayor's Appointment.
Second.
Any discussion on the Mayor's Appointment? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Notices, Communications, and Petitions, we have none unfinished business, none introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so that it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded an opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council? Yes, ma'am.
Jacqueline Smith, 311 Valley Drive. Thank you, President Coin, for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. I wish to address concerns regarding my property and Sycamore Park and the manner in which the city has pursued disagreement over this matter. I have lived on Valley Drive since 1985. Since 1986, I have been taking care of the strip of land just beyond my yard. I've put up a few birdhouses and a couple of benches, and I've been mowing the lawn since I planted them. Along the way, in Sycamore Park, the Boy Scouts built a bridge across Crestwood Creek and another across the storm ditch further up the park. The paths were very neat, and many kids rode bikes and people walked their dogs. Eventually, maintenance of the park on my side ceased, and the city removed the bridge when the creek undermined the bridge supports. At this time, the city also took down the exercise stations on the south side of the park. The city started mowing less and less of the park grasses. As the park deteriorated, my complaints have increased, and still, nothing has been done. The wooden swing set built by my husband was put up in my yard in 1991 on what we believed to be our property, following along the flower gardens of the previous owners. The swing set could easily be seen from the road and the park, and no one has ever complained about it until this past year. Right after I complained about the park at the Ward 3 Public Meeting, my property was surveyed, and this was followed by a letter from the Law Department to remove everything I had done to enhance the park within 30 days. I feel that I have been targeted for complaining, and I am disappointed that neither Mark Colasar, my elected representative, or Parks Director Tim Swanson, who has sat in my living room discussing the need to remove dead trees that were in danger of falling, couldn't have come by my house and discussed any issues they may have had. I also have, if you would let me, they took pictures of my property, so I took pictures of your property. May I present these to you?
Yes, you may. Thank you, and I'll distribute these, make copies for the rest of council. Thanks for your comments. And I think, Mr., I know you've been dealing with Mr. Huber, and maybe that hasn't been the most pleasant experience, but I guess we'll talk to Mr. Huber, and if there's any questions, you could talk directly to him. I think you have. Is that correct? Have you spoken with Mr. Huber at all yet?
No.
No?
If not.
Okay.
If not.
Okay.
But I plan on it after this meeting.
Okay. I know he's not here this evening, but we'll let him know, Mary, if you can let Mr. Huber know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Keith Racy. I live at 908 Laurel Glen's Drive in Medina. And I rise today, even though it's not on the agenda, to speak again about the CIC and seeing it through the lens, rather, of competition, better to see it through the lens of cooperation. Cooperation is something that helps everyone, whereas thinking of it as competition may help the few but may not help the many. It was my privilege to attend church on Sunday, and of course, it was Memorial Day Sunday. And the rabbi who dedicated the cemetery at Iwo Jima had a very moving speech that was quoted. And in that spirit of cooperation that benefits not just the elites but the common people, I'd like to quote just three sentences from that, if I may. "When the last shot has been fired, there will still be those whose eyes are turned backward, not forward, who will be satisfied with those wide extremes of poverty and wealth in which the seeds of another war can breed. We promise you our departed comrades, this too we will not permit. This war has been fought by the common man. Its fruits of peace must be enjoyed by the common man." He was writing before, inclusive language. "We promise by all that is sacred and holy that your sons, the sons of miners and millers, the sons of farmers and workers, the right to a living that is decent and secure." We are looking at the CIC primarily through the lens of competition. Unfortunately, that lens is clouded. In the limited time that I have to review things, I have found that some of the competing CICs around us do have prevailing wage provisions. Some of them also have prevailing wage provisions depending upon the source of funding. It would no way disadvantage us to think creatively and think outside of the box and use the lens of cooperation with the common person, with the common laborer, so that the taxpayers' money benefits not just the bankers and the developers and the people that have inside knowledge or attachments, but it also benefits everyone. I was told once at an economic development meeting that people in Medina are desperate for work. And this is said to me as a means of morally justifying using taxpayers' money to primarily benefit the few. Well, if my neighbor's house is on fire, and he's out of water, and I want to charge him $100 for a bucket of water to take advantage of his desperation, that does not bring me any moral or civic virtue. It is better for us to think about how we might cooperate to be helpful. I'm told that the veteran, young veteran unemployment rate is over 17%. Now, if we're going to use taxpayers' monies, and we're going to use them in a way that benefits everyone, maybe we could think outside of the box, and maybe we could put something in that says, we'll give some sort of advantage to those who are willing to employ the young veteran. Or maybe we'll give some sort of advantage to those who, like Hobby Lobby, are trying to pay their workers a living wage. This is to our advantage, because, to quote what I said last time again, if the jobs only pay minimum wage or 10 bucks an hour, they'll be coming back to the taxpayer for food stamps, and they'll be coming back to the taxpayer, all of us, when they need health insurance. So, I speak for the common good of everyone. Cooperation is equally as important as competition. I have nothing against the bankers or the developers. I have many business associates who are developers. Today, I refinanced the loan of the second home of a developer in Cleveland, who's a friend of mine. Now, it was for $536,000. It was his second home. He's done well by doing good. I do not in any way resent his doing well by doing good. But if he does well by taking advantage of those who are desperate, how can we call that something which benefits everyone? Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate that.
Thank you for your comments. And again, in the next meeting, I think we'll be talking about the CIC at the Finance Committee meeting, if you'd like to come to that one. Anybody else who would like to address council? Yes, sir? Back there, White, sure, yeah.
Hello, Mr. President. My name is John Janowitz. I live at 870 Ridgeview Drive. I've lived in Medina for 15 years, and I was the one that spoke to Mr. Huber today. I thought the conversation went fine. I don't.
Okay.
But...
With Mr. Huber? Okay.
He stated his point, I stated mine. I thought everything was civil conversation.
Okay.
Like I said, I've lived in Medina for 15 years. I guess a few months back, my neighbor, Mrs. Smith, has called to get Sycamore Park cleaned up. And about three weeks ago, I saw people in the back surveying the properties. There were five properties surveyed that butt up to the city parks. Over the weekend, I received a letter from the Law Director saying that I need to remove one item from city property that encroaches city property. Like I said, there were only five people surveyed, and of today, only two people have received letters. My question is, one of the other properties in the city that butt up to parkland going to be surveyed, and one of those people is going to be asked to remove their property from parkland? Or is this just retaliation against somebody who spoke up for the city to clean up the park? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comments. And I think Mr. Huber may be falling up with you, but I don't think there's, from my perspective, any retaliation. I think we try to keep track of the parkland. We may not do the best job possible of all, but everybody who has been encroached upon or encroaching upon parkland has been asked to remove their items from the park. I believe since I've been on council, that's been pretty standard policy, just because of the nature of liability that can arise. But Mr. Huber probably can speak to that better, but we appreciate your comments. Anybody else who wished to address council? Introduction and Consideration of Ordinances and Resolutions. The first one we have is Resolution 90-12, A Resolution Authorizing Participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation's Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Purchase of Sodium Chloride Rock Salt.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
Emergency clause has been requested, and I move to add it at this time.
Move adding the emergency clause.
Any discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance? Is this, Mayor, is this you or Ms. Conwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason for the emergency clause is, ODOT requires this document back to their office by May 31st, so we need to get this passed quickly. And this year, we'll be purchasing about 4,500 tons of salt, which will include the school. They will also be in this program with us this year. And that's an estimate between what we did not use last year and Gary's estimate for next year, that should be plenty. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you're looking forward to winter already. We didn't even get to summer yet. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the resolution?
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Resolution 90-12 passes five zero.
Ordinance 91-12, An Ordinance Authorizing The Mayor To Enter Into A Fireworks Display Contract With Pyrotechnico For The 2012 Annual Fireworks Display.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our annual contract for the fireworks. We do it on July 3rd rather than July 4th because we get a price break for doing that. The total exposure to the city is $15,000. However, previously, both Medina Township and Montville Township have contributed, as did Lafayette Township last year. All of the four surrounding townships have been sent letters requesting to contribute at least to the amount possible for them, and we're still awaiting their response.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Ordinance 91-12 passes five zero.
Resolution 92-12, A Resolution Authorizing The Filing Of An Application For Grant Assistance From The Ohio Department Of Development, Office Of Housing And Community Partnerships For The Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Formula Program For The Fiscal Year 2012.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
Emergency clause has been requested, and I move to add it at this time.
Second, adding the emergency clause.
Any discussion on the emergency clause and resolution? Mr. Hannan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our annual CDBG allotment request. We are pursuing $73,000 in funding, which would go towards public transit, the Westside Community Family Life Center, the Medina Community Recreation Center, home repair activities, fair housing, and administration. The emergency clause has been requested, as the application is due June 21st. And we have had two public meetings specific to the grant request on May 9th and May 24th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the resolution? Any further discussion on the resolution? Would a clerk please call the role in the resolution?
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Resolution 92-12 passes 5-0.
Resolution 93-12, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for grant assistance from the Ohio Historic Preservation Office for a certified local government grant.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
Emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
Second adding the emergency clause?
Any discussion on the resolution, emergency clause? Mr. Hannan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This application for a certified local government grant from the State Preservation Office would be utilized towards the Farmers Exchange Facility in South Court to prepare the application to have the building listed on the National Register of Historic Places in anticipation of the property owners pursuing a multimillion-dollar investment as part of a tax credit project in the fall. The CLG grant must be submitted by the city, but it would provide approximately $10,000 in funding to have the building in place on the National Register. It is requested for the emergency clause as we first became aware of the property owner's desire to pursue National Register nomination around May 1st, and the deadline for the application is June 15th.
Thank you. Any discussion on the emergency clause? Would a clerk please call the role in the emergency clause?
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Excuse me, Resolution 93-12 passes 5-0.
Resolution 94-12, a resolution authorizing an application for grant assistance from the NOOACA Nawaka Transportation Enhancement Grant to fund bicycle streetscape enhancements within the Champion Creek Corridor.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
Emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
Second adding the emergency clause?
Any discussion on the emergency clause or resolution? Mr. Hannan?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an application that the city pursued in 2010 through Nawaka, and unfortunately, did not get funded at that time. We came aware in late April that the funding program was going to start again June 1st, and we would like to be part of the first round of applications to hopefully increase our chances. This is up to about a $600,000 scope of work to complete streetscape enhancements for the Champion Creek District, which would include streetlights, street trees, sidewalk improvements, and to increase bicycle amenities within the district to bring the Champion Creek Trail into the downtown, and still finalize in some scope, but hoping to target some bike lanes or bike amenities on South Court Street as well. And the emergency clause is requested due to the June 1st deadline. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause? Would a clerk please call the role in the emergency clause?
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Would a clerk please call the role in the resolution?
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Resolution 94-12 passes 5-0.
Ordinance 95-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a wellness services agreement with Medina Hospital to provide wellness services for the City of Medina employees.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
Emergency clause has been requested, and I moved to add it at this time.
Move, second adding the emergency clause?
Any discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance? Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an agreement between the city and the hospital for them to provide a variety of services to improve the health and wellness of the employees of the city. You may recall, this was matched with a Bureau of Workers' Comp grant that provides some incentive money for the same purpose, but requires us to have an outside vendor or contractor to perform these services, and that's being fulfilled by the hospital. The emergency clause is requested because it's taken us quite a while to get both the Workers' Comp agreement and this agreement done through the hospital corporation, and we'd like to implement it as soon as possible for our staff.
Thank you. I'll just have to note that I abstain on this vote since the Cleveland Clinic is Medina Hospital, and our law firm represents the Cleveland Clinic and various other matters. Any further discussion on the emergency clause? Would a clerk please call the role in the emergency clause?
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 95-12 passes four yeas, one abstention.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would a clerk please call the role in the ordinance?
Coin?
Abstain.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 95-12 passes four yeas, one abstention.
Ordinance 96-12, an ordinance authorizing an appraisal FMVE for Champion Creek multipurpose trail.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
Emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
Second adding the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance? Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This is a request pertaining to an easement for the Champion Creek Trail. As part of our, because it's a state-funded project, we have to follow the state's protocol for acquiring easements, and part of that is for council to accept this easement and authorize our appraiser to begin negotiations.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause? Would a clerk please call the role in the emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would a clerk please call the role in the ordinance?
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Ordinance 96-12 passes 5-0.
Ordinance 97-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into Amendment Number Two to the agreement with Delta Airport Consultants, Inc., for engineering services at the Medina Municipal Airport relative to the Runway 9-27 rehabilitation project.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This agreement will allow the Delta Airport Consultants, who did the design services for this project, complete project administration and construction inspection services for the rehabilitation and resurfacing project at the airport.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would a clerk please call the role in the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 97-12 passes 5-0.
Resolution 98-12, a resolution authorizing a transfer of certain funds remaining in the Fire Bond Retirement Fund, Number 207, no longer needed for the purposes for which they were established, to the Fire Capital Fund, Number 307, of the City of Medina as per Higher Vice Code, Section 5705-14(c)(1), to authorize and direct the finance director to file an application to the Medina County Court of Common Pleas for approval of said transfer.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a process that the state lays out for transferring funds no longer needed for the purpose that they were collected for. The Fund 207 is the Fire Bond Fund. We issued, we did a bond issue in 1990 for fire stations. Those bonds have now been paid off, and this is the residual balance in that fund that can now be transferred to another place. I've asked to transfer it to the 307 Fund, which is Fire Capital, because I believe that's the most similar to the purpose for which those monies were collected.
Thank you. Any further discussion on your resolution? Would a clerk please call the role in the resolution?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Resolution 98-12 passes 5-0.
Resolution 99-12, a resolution accepting and approving the resolution passed by the Historic Preservation Board approving the application recommendation for the designation of historical landmark for the Medina Farmers Exchange.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Hannan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is a request which was submitted to the Historic Preservation Board. Jim Duffy at Farmers Exchange Facility requests to have his site and on South Court be designated a local historic landmark that does make the property under the review of the Historic Preservation Board. And it also allows the site to be eligible for the Certified Local Government Grant, which council just acted upon, and allows the site to be eligible for the state historic tax credit program, which I know the owners are anticipating pursuing this fall. This is the first local landmark within the city, and we're certainly appreciative of Mr. Duffy's efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Would a clerk please call the role in the resolution?
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Resolution 99-12 passes 5-0.
Ordinance 100-12, an ordinance amending ordinance numbers 172-11 passed December 12, 2011, amendments to the 2012 budget.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first two are this regard the CDBG grant, the first one being the advance to pay for it, which is also covered in the following ordinance. The approval for the advance is the following ordinance, the appropriation is this one. The second one is to spend that CDBG grant money. After that, there's two for the ODOT project at the left turn on Lake Road. Then there are four that are transfers, and then the final one is a pass-through of grant money from the Stevenson Foundation for the construction of the pavilion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would a clerk please call the role in the ordinance?
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Ordinance 100-12 passes 5-0.
Ordinance 101-12, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund advances.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. Durham already mentioned this one. Any further discussion on it? Would a clerk please call the role in the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Ordinance 102-12 passes 5-0.
We have three ordinances to be added to the agenda. Ordinance 102-12, 103-12, and 104-12 will entertain a motion to add the foregoing ordinances.
Move to add the three ordinances to tonight's agenda.
Second.
Any discussion on adding the ordinances? Would a clerk please call the role in adding the ordinances?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Ordinance 102-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept one perpetual trail easement for the Champion Creek multipurpose trail project.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
Emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
Second adding the emergency clause?
Any discussion adding the emergency clause on the ordinance? Mr. Patton?
Thank you. Similar to the ordinance previously about Champion Creek, in this case, we, the council has already authorized the appraisal and authorized to do negotiations. We've completed that and brought this easement to you for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion on the emergency clause? Would a clerk please call the role in the emergency clause?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?